Mark Baldwin.
Yeah, well, and Gonzalo and Mark and Lance and others on the UAC and, you know, let's, I think we can cooperatively work through this in the fall after the budget.
I would even take the more holistic look at this as well. I mean, we're consolidating all of our utilities under a single department.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, electric, water, wastewater, okay? We understand that wastewater is a money eater. That's just the way it is. You're not gonna make money out of wastewater.
You're not making money.
Oh, yeah. That's where you put the stuff you eat. I know. And then, and then, you know, water and electric tend to be, you know, and for all intents and purposes, moneymakers, okay? That's where we would like to, that's the glamour part of utilities. But I'm, our biggest problem has been trying to keep up with our wastewater expenses, which are on a very high trajectory. They've been that way for several years. And so I would even go so far as to say, when we're looking at consolidation, we should probably look at an integrated utilities fund from which electric, water, and wastewater would all come out of, okay? It would be self-contained, which means we wouldn't be doing interdepartment transfers anymore from that fund except to cover special services like bill collections and those kind of things, okay? And then we would have a separate bond fund, or whatever you want to call it, for utilities, which would cover capital. And that way, we, our capital expenditures don't, don't come out of cash. We don't want to be paying for capital with cash because those are longer-term investments that can be spread out over multiple years. We lose, we use cash, we have a cash flow issue at that point. So, and so I'm thinking that probably might be the best way to go, to go to two funds in our utilities area. One is utilities operations fund, and one's utilities capital slash bonding fund. And that way, we would be able to have much better efficiencies. And it jives better with our, with our overall, you know, future outlook, which is to have our utilities consolidated, regardless of what the front end is gonna look like, whether it's a, whether it's a BPU, or whether it's a, uh, a, 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 or whatever, okay? We're still gonna work with integrated utilities. We've made that decision. That ship to sail, just like with the fire district.
Yeah.
So...
That's kinda what I was looking at as well, you know, to combine everything. I think that's a good, it'd be much more efficient, in my opinion, but...
Yeah. And that's kinda what I was saying. You just put a much finer point on it. I was, because I was figuring we'd save some of that discussion for the fall, but that's exactly what, what I, I've been, that's what I've envisioned for a couple of years, actually.
Yeah. The only thing is, I would, I would like to see, if that's the case, I would like to see the, the UAC, or whatever is the successor to it, or whatever form it takes, have a much, much more, you know, intimate role in that process. Instead of, you know, just having kind of like, okay, we're gonna work with stamp. I wanna have individuals who'll be able to deep, you know, dig into that process and be able to come up with efficiencies and maybe some of our, you know, some of our staff may not even have.
Okay. Todd, was that all for you?
Yeah, that was all for now.
Lee?
Yeah, I had, I had just a couple of short ones. I, I share Councilman Schut's concern for the EDC outlay of $55,000. I'm looking at it just purely from a, it's a, it's a 29% increase over last, over last year. And it just seems really excessive to have that big of an increase, especially given, like Councilman Schute mentioned, the history of this EDC and are not really achieving anything with it, year after year, outlay after outlay. I, I would like, I guess I would like to see something that Councilman Harrison mentioned before, possibly a baseline amount and then a pay-for-performance thereafter. Something along those lines. I know we talked about that in a previous meeting. That's, that's my first and only one, or with, with regard to that. The other thing I was, I'm wondering about is the benefit district. I kinda think we can't talk about that enough and, and I wanna see, you know, I wanna know what it is we can actually do about it as a body. We need to, we need to take action on that somehow. I don't know what the, what the action is, and I guess we'll have to talk to Ryan about that. Seems like, seems like the, the citizens have been carrying this burden for a long time, and we really need to make something happen there.
Is there anything on the civil side we might be able to do with regards to county? And I'm, you know, I'm, I don't like the fact that municipality would have to sue a county to do their jobs, but it sure seems like there's, there's, it's inexcusable, I think, to a certain extent, that no action or substantive actions take, have been taken for, you know, at least five years in some of these districts.
It's more than.
Yeah.
It's for pushing up on eight, on seven of them. And we, actually, this year, we talked to them again, and there's gonna be something going out this year, but unless Cheryl's seen something they were supposed to notify, and I haven't seen it, thanks, because frankly, I know that she would told me.
Yes.
So...
I mean, our, our citizens are paying, are taking a burden.
Absolutely.
Increases absorbing it.
Remember that, right, and so remember, our favorite friends are not delinquent enough yet to pull the trigger. It's still painful, but those other two parcels that I've complained and whined and moaned and groaned about, ad nauseam, I'm not getting anywhere. That might be something, but maybe Ryan could come up with something genius here. Just remember that the statutory collection process, we can't do anything yet.
Now, the two parcels that you're talking about, they're almost a million dollars in arrears.
Yep. Yes, they are. And that, and it's, they haven't paid a penny since 2008. And those are the ones we've been complaining about.
I know. It's, it's funny. I've sat in Laura's office in like 2012 and said, called Calvin Hayden at the time, and at I Alert, and I know that Laura calls Mr. Welcome.
Yeah? No, it was Mr., it wasn't Mr. Welcome, he's the preserver. It was their attorney.
Oh, yeah.
My, his name escapes me.
Well, we started with...
I complained enough, I got a letter saying, "Stand down," basically, but...
Really?
Yeah, kinda. It was something like, "You just don't understand, they're there." And I'm like, "Well, I understand you're not doing it," but I even offered my staff. I didn't get very far.
One, one other thing that stuck out for me, I mean, there's, there are a number of things in the, in the budget that I'll, I'll discuss on the 20th also, but one thing that kinda stuck out was, I was wondering how we got from a consensus of six police cars to eight police cars. Now, I'm not against police cars. I like police cars. They're really cool, especially the, the new SUVs. And I know that we need them. I, and I probably, I think we could probably get consensus for the other ones. I just wanted to know how we got there from, from six. That's what we had talked about in the previous meeting.
Perhaps I misunderstood the consensus, but I thought it was...
Because we talked about four initially, and we, we increased that to six. And then I, we get the budget and it says eight.
You know, I, I, maybe, and I'll, I'll just throw this in here real quick. I said, I mean, I, I looked, I looked at the left side of the dais and said, "Tell us how many it is that you need."
Yeah, right. That's what happened.
I think that's probably where it came from, but I'll listen.
That is correct. We were asked to go back and talk with the chief on what the needs were. So, when finance staff went back and talked with the chief on what the needs were, we arrived at eight for a recommendation, not a consensus. It's presented to you based on his request for eight for your consideration and approval.
Okay. I was just wondering how that happened.
Sure.
The last thing I had was, and I don't think you have to, I'm gonna do my own research on this, but the two-year budget, you mentioned a lot of advantages. Well, you didn't mention any disadvantages.
I haven't done it, so I don't know if it's got disadvantages. That's the honest answer. Cheryl, have you done the two-year budget?
Well, I mean, you really, when you start to look at it, downside is you commit a little bit further, force you to plan out a little bit more, be a little bit more strategic, be a little bit more visionary. So, it's a little bit more work, from a policymaker's perspective, as well as from a staff's perspective, but it really, you know, allows you to look a little bit further down the road and provide a little bit more certainty. It requires a greater commitment.
And discipline, which...
And more discipline, correct.
Negative, so...
Um, you know, I've been pushing for two-year budgets for a long time. And one of the reasons why is because, one, that's how businesses do it. The private sector works off two-year budgets all the time, okay? The second thing is, it's gonna, it's gonna force us to actually come up with a formalized capital process. I mean, this year, we've got a budget. We don't have a formal CIP still. We have informal CIP projects that have been earmarked for CIP. We don't have a formal CIP yet. Well, if we go to a two-year budget process, we better have a formal CIP and a formal CIE in order for us to be able to do the strategic planning we need to do long-year project, long-term projects that last longer than two years. This is gonna force us to formalize that process. I don't know if that could be considered a disadvantage. I think that's more of an advantage than anything else.
Seems like an advantage.
Yeah.
And place right back to the discipline that I'm talking about.
Exactly. I mean, we're gonna have to have a CIP. And I'm, I'm fully expecting we have a formal CIP next year.
And my last thing was, I, I wanted just to thank you for the, the budget presentation also. I thought it was fantastic. It really was very, it was very comprehensive.
Rich?
Thank you. Well, we're throwing thanks on. We'll just, some more on. Real quick on the SUVs. I was kinda with Lee on that, but the, the main thing I noticed, and I brought this up the last time we talked about it, I think right now they're 35,500 each, which I think when we talked about it before, they needed to be about 40,000. And I'm just gonna see where, because right now, based on the numbers, we're about 36,000 shy, which is pretty much a whole vehicle.
Yeah, we tried to factor in the trade-in value of some of the vehicles that we'll get. We also did some cooperative pricing on some of the accessories with Kansas City and Missouri. So, we got a 40% discount on a lot of the electronics. So, we think we can do it for 35,500. A lot of it will depend on the current pricing runs through September, and we have no idea what Ford's gonna come up with. The SUVs is kinda the vehicle of choice nationwide. The last time we went through this process with the Crown Vics, years and years ago, they kept the price pretty steady until everybody got in them, and then they, they did incremental price increases, and we're hoping they do that again this time.
Okay.
But we think with the builds that we have priced out, with not only the vehicles, but with the lights and sirens and all that, we think we can, we can manage 35,500.
Well, that, that would be my main concern, that we don't get you guys enough. I mean, we fall short, you know, one vehicle and accessories or something comes up and bites us.
We think overall, we can, we can manage within 35,500.
Also on that, how are we gonna be able to make sure we get the department these vehicles as soon as possible, at least part of them? Because I know last year's budget process, about this time, we were talking about it, and we got them just before festivals. So, I think, and there's, if I'm not mistaken, a six-month wait on those vehicles. So, we almost need to like put that in right now to get four of those vehicles right away.
I was gonna bring that up, actually, after the, yeah. I, I think we need to...
I mean, I, I think we need to get on the list right now for half of these.
You have budget authority. We could do it. It's just budget, it's not budget, but you could.
Right. We're, we're looking at, okay, when we adopt in August, what we might do as a mid-year budget adjustment.
Okay.
So, let me look, make that homework assignment for us to look at.
To me, that would be, I mean, with, based on the cars we have now, I think, the sooner we can get four here, the better off we're gonna be. So...
Right. The only reason it didn't come back was because we were presenting the 16, which would be January. But part of what we look for from you is what you're providing tonight, that perhaps there are things you want to move up, so we could look at it for mid-year adjustment.
Yeah. I, I was, I'm kinda with Rich on this one.
Okay.
We've got a need, and obviously, there's been a demonstrated need for vehicles. Can we take some of our reserves from this year, do a mid-year budget adjustment for four vehicles this year, and then go for four next year?
Four and four.
I don't think you have to do an actual adjustment.
Well, we'll check it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Answer on Monday?
Yeah, I was gonna say...
Answer on Monday at our...
That's, that's fine, yeah.
Very good.
Also, special events coordinator. From my perspective, I'm, I'm not sure that we really need that position because, I mean, we've got Larry and Danica, who I think as a team could fulfill a lot of what that special events coordinator does. I mean, Danica's over there telling everybody what's going on, and she's doing a great job. So, if she continues to do that with Larry, tag team in that event, that saves the city a little bit of money, at least initially. I know in the future, I think we might need that position, but I think right now, from my perspective, I think we need to let them see what they can do together. I mean, we haven't had both of them on the, you know, on the docket for a year yet. So, it's, from my perspective, we'll get them on board and let them see what they can do.
Okay. Jeff, would you like to start on that? Or Cheryl, would you like to start on that? Because I, and I, I think that we can make some sense of this one.
Right. Yeah, I think we'd like to have Jeff talk a little bit about kinda what we have in terms of our current staffing, the programs, that new initiatives that we've put in place this year, and kinda where we're trying to go with some of those initiatives. And then I'll come back.
Sure. Yeah, just to give you a little brief history, the total number of full-time employees at the Parks and Recreation Department, just a few short years ago, was 14 full-time employees. We have reduced that force in the recent few years. We're sitting at currently 12. So, adding this particular position would still be below that, that high mark that we were a few years ago. Currently, looking at our last benchmark survey, we're at .52 full-time employees per thousand population when compared to seven other benchmark communities that are at 1.14. So, very similar to what Laura highlighted with our community compared to other surrounding communities, the Parks and Recreation Department is, is sitting there as well. We have continued to grow. It's been a growth thing for our community. We've been adding activities, programs, events, and continue to enhance those events. In fact, the recent July 4th activities that took place a little over a week ago is a good example of some of those enhancements. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of prep work to make those things happen. And we do have, quite honestly, a taxed staff, many of which will work six and seven days a week, not with complaints by any means, but certainly we're at that point where we're, we're at that bubble breaking, so to speak. And aligned with the council's desire to continue to improve quality of life and economic development, I think enhancing our special events and adding new events, whether that be a fall festival or some new trending-type events that would bring visitors and even potential residents to the community, this, this could be a piece of that puzzle.
Additionally, and I'll just jump in for a second, I, this is a position that while tasked to the Parks and Recreation Department, if, if we're going to have, you know, in the past, we've had the Secretary of Commerce and the Secretary of Transportation that shown up, shown up here. And while Larry's certainly very familiar with oversight on those kind of events, and, and Danica's perfectly capable of promoting them, organizing them is an entirely different kettle of fish. And if you take the, the kind of benefit that it would provide for Parks and Rec in, in crossover into other departments when needed, I don't think that the decision to, to bring it in as one of the positions was come too lightly.
And my final question is, who do we know is doing a two-year budget?
I think that started this year, correct?
I think it's this year. They were just talking about it.
So, if they go down in flames, we probably won't afford it.
They won't.
I'll, I'll be honest, the, the biggest problem I've had with, with the five-year budget cycles we've had in the past, is that years three through five typically are just a, you just throw darts, and you, and you come up with numbers out of the hat. And when it comes to like, for example, fund balance projections and things like that, they're completely, almost, I'm not gonna say they're completely non-workable...
No, we're trending, but they change.
Yeah, but, I mean, with circumstances, things that happen, I mean, I mean, we were working off of five-year budgets back in 2007, 2008, and look what happened. Our, our revenues that we expected weren't there, and we were, we were not quick enough to respond. And that's why we end up with 2010's tax increases because of that.
Oh, yeah. Well, I, I agree with you, except I like the idea of calling up placeholders and out-years instead of throwing darts. It sounds bad.
I promise there's no darts in my office. They wouldn't let me have something sharp, anyway.
Buddha dolls. Oh, finally. I guess I'm, I'm 100% on board with Steve and, and Lee on the Southwest Johnson County EDC stuff.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm, my guess is that, that we can expect to see Greg here on the 20th willing to stand for some questions.
Certainly. That'd be great.
Well, very good. Laura, very good, very comprehensive presentation.
Take the time.
You know, and, and hopefully, next year, we can see another one of these budget awards for this presentation this year. It would certainly seem like it would be in order, considering how this one's going. Next up on the agenda is public comments. At this time, members of the public are, oh, I'm sorry.
Before we move the budget component, I heard a couple of council members indicate there are some things we need to cover on the 20th. It would really help us if we can kinda get some of those questions before. So, if we can get them this week, then we can come to the meeting on the 20th, providing some feedback or some responses instead of...
Changes or what?
Changes, you know, things that you'd like to see or information that you'd like to have for that meeting.
Times are getting shorter and shorter and...
Yes. And that we have for the benefit of the public, because that's a public hearing on the 20th.
Todd, you, Todd, you had a couple of things you wanted to cover on it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go through the briefing or...
Okay, that'd be fine. If I could get them prior to, really help us. Okay, thank you.
And, and when it comes to that kinda information, the sooner that you can get that kind of information to Cheryl and her staff, the better.
Thank you.
You sure that's it? Okay. We'll move on. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. If you're interested in making public comments, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be heard.
Adam Cox, 285 East Skylark Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just one question along the line about the budget. I know this isn't a public hearing, but I noticed something in the electrical department, in the payroll numbers. The fiscal year 2014 overtime number was about $45,000, and it went up to $90,000 this year, and its remaining $90,000 projected for next year. So, I just, out of curiosity, was wondering why did we have such an increase in overtime? You know, I, I, I certainly want someone to fix my electricity when it goes out in overtime, but doubling seemed a bit excessive. So, I was just curious as to why we're maintaining that high level of over, overtime in that budgeted item. That's it.
Okay, Adam. Thank you. And, you know, I know you guys are digging already, but, you know, when, we can go ahead and move on with the council meeting. And my guess is that by public comments, or, you know, you guys or Gonzalo could have an answer for us on that. And if not, at least maybe a little update with more updates to come. Anyone else coming forward?
Randy Gorsick, 620 East Hawthorne, Gardner, Kansas. Mayor, Council, gentlemen. I just wanted to make a comment. I've, I've made this comment for several three years, back in Tom Reader's time, when it was 25,000. At the end of the day, I didn't see a return on investment for 25,000. And many times, that Economic Development Group, the Southwest Johnson County Group, hung their hat on Coleman and did that for several years. At the end of the day, I think that 55,000, keeping in mind that they potentially could get the same amount from Edgerton, which would be 110,000, is amount of money that I wouldn't support as a constituent. And at the end of the day, for 110,000, I think we could talk to Mayor Roberts and pull our money together and create a Gardner-Edgerton Economic Development Group, and go forth with just two focuses versus the half a dozen or more focuses that they have currently. So, I would implore you and recommend that you do not support the $55,000 expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
With no one else coming forward, we'll move to the consent agenda. I understand that there's a council member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda.
Item four, please.
Okay. Would council like to proceed on consent agenda items one through three?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items one through three.
Second.
Motion, shoot, second, Milton, that we approve the consent agenda items one through three. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any in abstention? Consent agenda items one through three passes. Consent agenda item number four?
Yes, it's my understanding that it is not ready for presentation, so I'd like to table it to the 20th, meeting on the 20th.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Would you like to, you can make a motion?
I would make a motion to table, I consent agenda item number four, second, the meeting on the 20th.
Ooh, okay. Motion winners, second, shoot, that we table consent agenda item number four to the July 20th City Council meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any in abstention? Consent agenda item number four is tabled. New business item number one, considering adopting an ordinance, revising the governing body rules of procedure. Genie? We've got an ordinance number for this. I've got it here somewhere, don't I?
I should. Second page, 2490.
2490?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Genie, thank you.
Good evening. The governing body held a work session on June 1st to review suggested revisions to incorporate into the governing body rules of procedure. Staff has prepared the revisions as directed, and the rules of procedure are adopted by ordinance and then incorporated into the municipal code, and staff is requesting adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. Public comment regarding new business item number one? With no one coming forward, questions for Genie or discussion regarding new business item number one? I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2490. Some of...
Second.
Motion, shoot, second more, that we adopt ordinance number 2490, incorporating by reference the governing body rules of procedure as revised into the municipal code of the city of Gardner, Kansas. Speaker, can you call roll on this?
Councilmember Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember...
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2490 passes. New business item number two, consider the establishment of advisory committees. Strategic priority here is to promote economic development, improve quality of life, infrastructure and asset management, and it also speaks to the triple C approach that we've been talking about for a couple of months, about communication, collaboration, and civic engagement. The governing body and the citizens of Gardner have expressed an interest in increased citizen engagement. The governing body has established the following strategic priorities: economic development, improved quality of life, fiscal stewardship, and infrastructure and asset management. Citizen advisory committees are significant means to obtain citizen involvement on key issues. The recommendation is to create a citizens advisory committee for each of the following five areas: economic development advisory committee, streets, sidewalks, and stormwater advisory committee, citizens police advisory committee, ADA advisory committee, and Parks and Recreation advisory committee. These would focus on the key issues currently affecting the city, the resolutions that are attached here, adopting the advisory committee outlines qualifications, members, terms, meetings, purpose, and duties. A couple of things that, that I'll point out quickly, we are planning to have an ex officio member from the council appointed to, at least one to each of these committees. The only one of them that spelled out in the resolution that would actually be a, a, an assigned one, a standing one, would be the Economic Development Advisory Committee. The, the council member would include, would be the, whoever is currently serving right now or in the future as the ex officio, a member of the Gardner-Edgerton Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And when it comes to, there are, and I'm sure you've all read your packets, there are a couple of areas where we're looking for... there are, and I'm sure you've all read your packets, there are a couple of areas where we're looking for particular skill sets to assist primarily in the Economic Development Advisory Committee, Streets, Sidewalks, and Stormwater, and then ADA advisory as well, in which case we are looking for people that may suffer from a handicapable condition that would give them insight that the rest of us might not have. So with that being the case, I would open the floor for public comments regarding new business item number two. If you're interested in making public comments on new business item number two, step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be heard.
Adam Cox, two eighty-five East Skylark Street. Just in general on this, one thing that jumped out at me was the Economic Development Advisory Committee. If you look at the list of the members, former members of the Economic Development Task Force, building contractors, developers, members of financial institution, members of educational institution, members of cultural institutions, members of welfare agencies and labor or business and industrial representatives, didn't list just regular citizens. So, you know, I mean, a little confused as to why, you know, maybe an educational institution would bring more, you know, than just a regular person on that. All the other committees actually listed that you could be just a regular member of the public and be on the committee, so that jumped out to me. Beyond that, it's just, you know, as one of the people who's kind of, you know, occasionally said it would be nice to interact or have a more interactive discussion, et cetera, with folks, you know, committees to me are just more layers of things that you send it off in committee and then it goes to die. Or it comes back with a recommendation of the committee and you accept or reject it. You know, it doesn't provide the, you know, on-hand, back-and-forth discussion where new ideas and new things can come out because unless the members of the council or, you know, if a member is at each and every meeting of one member of every committee, you may not get the conduit directly to the people who really are making the decisions. And the other thing that comes to mind is, so we've got five committees, five members, three-year commitment, which is pretty stiff, twenty-five people to draw on to try to staff these things, and we have, at a typical council meeting, you know, six to fourteen where all the real decisions and, you know, major things are happening that people might be interested in commenting on. So it's going to be quite a trick to staff those committees, I think, in my opinion. I mean, you know, you know, I'd like to see it happen, I guess. I mean, I'm not quite sure what, you know, it does provide another mechanism. Not a lot of folks use the mechanisms that are in place. Not a lot of the other subsidiary bodies are even attended, you know, utility, whatever it's called now, and that type of thing. So, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, is this getting us further away from public engagement or closer to public engagement? You know, I would have liked to have seen, you know, and I applaud that we're moving in the direction of getting the citizen input up front. I came to the meeting in January. I thought it was really nice. And yes, some of the budget items were discussed here and there in, you know, a specific one subject along the way in the months after, but there was never another public discussion. There was never another, you know, which way are we going? And, you know, things changed, and some of them I'm good with. You know, I see that on the project for City Hall, the bulletproof glass, and some of those things just isn't there now. It's not discussed. Westside got, came out, you know, and it's not there anymore, right? And some of that stuff, it's hard to track. When did that come out? When did the things here at City Hall, where did they go? Who moved them where, you know, I can't tell. But, you know, so as far as these committees, you know, I mean, it'd be great if they were a success, et cetera. Personally, you know, I'd like to come, and if there's something that interests me, I'll comment on it. So, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna only come to one slice of the pie, you know. We allow people to comment on whatever, you know, is important to them and their issue, and I think that's as it should be. So, you know, I'm just giving you kind of my take on the, on the committee thing, so. Good luck with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. We appreciate that. Other comments?
Good evening. Michael Thomas, two-four-six, West Park. Actually, just want to build a little bit on what Mr. Cox hit. Also in the EDC, it does have stipulations, but also in the streets and sidewalks, there's also some stipulations there as well. With it being a board, I don't know that the stipulations are quite necessary. When you're being presented something, you're not actually going out looking at each street and decide what needs this. A lot of this will be coming in and guidance will be given. Deciding between this street and that street that needs little attention, I don't think requires a degree or a general contractor license. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Other questions or comments? All right, questions or discussion from the city council?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of ducktail on what both Adam and Michael said. From the standpoint of, we have an Economic Development Task Force. That Economic Development Task Force has those people in those specialties that were listed here. And I think that it probably would be important to make a distinction between the Economic Development Task Force and this particular advisory body. When I see the Economic Development Task Force doing their work, I see it almost like a think tank. And you talk about like, you know, Washington DC, have your think tanks, and they put out their white papers and their policy papers and recommendations, things like that. And then you have committees, and those committees help to draft legislation. And legislation's supposed to kind of be, you know, the implementation of that policy with assistance from folks like the Economic Development Task Force. That doesn't necessarily require to have the same kind of background and experience on your advisory committee as you would have for your Economic Development Task Force. We have those people, and I don't want to disband that committee. I would see this as a complement, not necessarily as an addition.
And if I can-
Sure.
Interject the thinking there. While we still have the strategic task force that has proven willing to come back and revisit, in many cases, most of them are not Gardner residents.
Correct.
Most of them are probably not going to be interested or willing to come back for evening meetings.
Oh, no.
The task force meetings have been during the day, generally. While I'm not, I'm not married to this particular lineup, I can tell you that, you know, that the kind of pieces that you need and the kind of knowledge that you need when you're making economic development decisions involves the kind of people that we're talking about here. And we've got these folks in our community, building contractors, bankers, people that work, you know, across a whole different variety of professions that work very nicely into economic development. But there again, that's, this is a, this is a policy decision, but if we're going to be getting input from the task force, it's probably going to be written or relayed-
That's fine.
-through an individual. But I think we want to make sure that we've got enough people that would understand what they're forwarding to us to make a good and educated figure.
All right, so actually, the way that we could fix this then is instead of saying the members shall be, say the members may be. And that way, it keeps us off the hook, and if we can't find those individuals, we can still fill those spots. You know, we will pursue people from that, from those backgrounds, but if they're not there, we can fill them with regular citizens that are interested in being engaged.
I agree. I think twenty-five people maybe could be difficult to find.
A large number of people.
And if we limit it even more, I think we're narrowing it down.
Yeah.
Okay. Genie, what would you anticipate the language would be there? We're talking about section two of the first resolution?
The members may be building contractors, developers. As I understood it, they wouldn't be the former task force because you're going to keep the task force. So we'd strike that language and just go from the members may be, and then building contractors, developers, members of financial institutions.
Cooper Center?
Yeah. And I think from our discussions, Cheryl, I think that that's something you would probably recommend as well, that we try to keep the task force together as it's currently constituted, and they would do their work separately.
Correct.
But they would interface in some way with the advisory committee.
That would work. That would work, and we could keep them intact when we need them for key, key items.
Sure.
But task force, not committee or standing commission. And that's, that's the other thing. This is, we're going to set these up as committees on the front end. We're setting them up by resolution so that they're not memorialized. A year from now, we might decide that some of these aren't necessary and may determine that some of them are especially necessary, and at which point we might establish them by ordinance to make them standing committees. One other thing, and I'll just mention this briefly. You know, the Streets, Sidewalks, and Stormwater Advisory Committee has duties laid out already. But I think ideally, upon passage, with any luck, upon passage of the sales tax renewal, I would actually like to see us change this by resolution and include some additional duties that involve oversight for spending on the sales tax.
Yes.
Both Aletha and Shawnee have ad hoc committees for that. They've gone in two entirely different directions. Shawnee is meeting once a month with twelve people, which seems like an awfully big stick. Aletha's gone in the entirely different direction, seven people, and they meet once a year. We've already got a committee that is scheduled to meet once a month. I think that, and the reason that we've got all these scheduled to meet once a month because it's better to have a day set aside for it, and if there's not actionable items, you can just cancel the meeting with proper notice. And, you know, because if there's not something for Parks and Rec to discuss, we can cancel that meeting. But if we've got it on the calendar, people are planning to attend.
When you mentioned oversight of the sales tax money, which I'm absolutely a hundred and ten percent in favor of, by the way, I think that that's needed, are you also talking about the possibility of doing like a semi-annual or quarterly presentation from that committee before the, before the dais, showing us where our, you know, funds are to, to, you know, to actuals, you know, projection to actuals, or will we have that done by the finance group, or?
Actually, I, you know, I sent Cheryl some information about what Shawnee is doing and what Aletha's doing. She's actually got a nice working relationship with the city manager of locations. While I don't think that we're going to do it every month, and I don't think we're going to just do it annually, I see something like what you're talking about in our future, but I think, let's get the, let's get the referendum passed, and then between now and the end of the year, we'll get the language right so that we've got the oversight committee set up in such a way that the people feel like they're getting proper representation and the council's all on board.
And that's, the reason why I bring that up is because that helps to sell the referendum. I mean, knowing that there is a citizen group that's an objective body that's going to be looking at oversight of this, of the sales tax money, and it's going to enforce accountability, it's going to make the folks out there feel a lot better about voting for a referendum for a sales tax assessment.
Well, is there anybody that's not in agreement that that's something that we need for the Streets, Sidewalks, and Stormwater Committee if, say, the referendum passes in September?
Yeah, I agree. Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we are in unanimous agreement. I knew that Kristi Harrison wasn't going to be here. I talked with her about it. I know she agrees as well. So, and, and yes, I think that in section two here, it talks about the members shall have. We want to change that to-
Yeah, may.
May?
Yeah. I would say on most, all of them.
Universally.
Right.
And make sure that we're not excluding that.
Right.
Yeah, now-
That means we're looking for, we're looking for people like that, but if we can't find them or they're applying, we still- As long as you're limited on drool, we'll take care of it. And knuckle dragging. Well, you know. We don't want to exclude them.
I have a couple of quick questions, Ms. Claire, if you don't mind.
Certainly, go ahead, Mr.
When and where are these meetings going to happen? I'd like to ask. It seems like we're already kind of booked up here at City Hall, so that was my first thought on each one of these groups. I'm just wondering where they fit in. I mean, are we going to share seats, or?
And if these are advisory boards, are they going to be subject to Kansas Open Meetings Act, which means we would have to have them recorded?
Right. So, I mean-
Actually, actually-
We don't have to record them, but they will be subject to the Open Meetings Act, and to answer your question, we're going to have to pull the rabbit out of a hat on that one, because we are challenged a little bit with space and dates, and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to get that senior center updated, but we need to-
Right.
Look at how we get them.
And we have established the standard of recording all of these meetings.
Yes.
I would like to see that continued.
I went to, this is, at this point, this is advisory and ad hoc as opposed to standing committees. I mean, if they become standing committees, I'd like to see them recorded, but I don't want to make promises on something like that when, you know, there's many a day that we used to have city council work sessions held back here. We've had board, we've had, we've had council retreats at the electric building in the, in the conference room there. We've held things at the senior center. Now, if we've got these things scheduled for particular nights, maybe we can, maybe we can get it done. But my guess is that we're going to get it passed first, then we're going to get them staffed and scheduled.
That would be my next question, is we're going to have somebody there to do the minutes and all for each one of these groups? Is that, that be the case?
Absolutely. We see them getting kind of our-
Well, I'm just making sure, because that'll run people off quicker than anything. I mean, we won't get twenty-five people if they go, so I'm going to have to take notes.
No, I see us doing our standard format of them getting the material prior to the meeting to review with some staff
Right.
packets that look very similar to what we're doing for our other committees.
Okay. And finally, would be on the citizens that are the police advisory committee. I'd make a recommendation that the primary folks that need to be looked at on that are people who have been to the Citizens Police Academy, because they're already going to be months, if not years, ahead of anybody who's not familiar with what's already going on. And because we have, what are we, in the fourth class and that? I mean, that's a pool of people who already know what's going on with the police department, so I think if, it would behoove us if we're going to have those folks that they, at least, that one would be one that we'd say we'd prioritize and want to have graduates of the Citizens Police Academy.
That makes sense.
And then after that, we go, hey, if there's not enough of the CPA grads, then we move on to regular citizens.
Well, I, I think there's a way to work that in that doesn't, that's not exclusionary of other people in a manner that we've heard from Adam and Michael this evening. First off, if we're going to, if we're going to list a couple of different qualifications, I think Citizens Police Academy grants certainly can be one of those that deserve more consideration. We've got an awful lot of law enforcement in this town that don't wear a Gardner badge.
Well, that's true.
And while I think that the Citizens Police Academy folks are up to speed, they're probably not the same as Johnson County sheriffs or a Kansas Highway Patrol member.
Right. I'm willing to have them too.
There's, there's also people that might have participated in the ride-along program. And then, you know- And then, you know, just like any of the other committees, there's people that are going to, to want to be involved that haven't had an opportunity to take in a Citizens Police Academy. Each of the council members is going to be able to recommend their, their, their own person, and, you know, if, I think that if we add the, the recommendations of Jeannie Law Enforcement, Citizens Police Academy graduates, and people that have participated in the ride-along program.
And former, and former reserve officers too.
Well, or.
Some of those as well.
Current or prior military, or I mean, law enforcement.
Current or prior law enforcement. We good on, are we good on that, Jeannie?
The members may be CPA graduates or, or former members of law enforcement and individuals who have participated in the ride-along program.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Maybe.
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 The members may.
Yes, may.
May. Okay. Anyone else? We've got a whole bunch of resolutions here, starting with, Jeannie, I've misplaced my list, I've appears.
To me, on the ADA advisory committee, before we all begin, can we clarify, that one says, it says shall we residents, at least three, the members team individuals with disabilities?
May.
Are we?
Let's go to may.
May.
Yeah, because it might be hard to get three with disabilities. I don't think so, but it might be.
It just depends on dates and all that other stuff.
Sure.
Yeah.
So what's the first resolution?
Nineteen twenty seven.
Nineteen twenty seven. I would entertain a motion on resolution number nineteen twenty seven.
Second.
Motion Melton, second Winters, that we adopt resolution number nineteen twenty seven, establishing an economic development advisory committee. City clerk?
Councilmember Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Schu?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Resolution number one nineteen twenty seven passes. I'd entertain a motion on resolution number nineteen twenty eight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Moore, second Schu, that we adopt resolution number nineteen twenty eight, establishing a streets, sidewalks, and stormwater advisory committee. City clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Schu?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Resolution number one nine two nine passes. One two, one nine two eight passes. I would entertain a motion on resolution number one nine two nine.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Melton, second Schu, that we adopt resolution number nineteen twenty nine, establishing a citizens' police advisory committee.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Schu?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Resolution number nineteen twenty nine passes.
Yeah, I, my only, I just suggested revision on the ADA resolution. You know, technically, anybody with a disability would be eligible for any of the five spots. We couldn't disallow them for that. You can, you can express a preference that three, that three of the spots would be held by people with disabilities. I think if you say with at least three spots, or, if you just change kind of the compulsory language to may, then I think it, it sounds exclusionary for the other two spots. So my recommended change would be shall be residents of the city of Gardiner with a preference for three spots being held by individuals with disability.
That sounds better. More, more clear.
Jeannie, you got that?
Yes.
Or you will?
Thank you, Mr. Deng. Appreciate that.
Right. Thank you. The catch? I'd entertain a motion on resolution number nineteen thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Schu, second Moore, that we adopt resolution number nineteen thirty, establishing an ADA advisory committee.
Councilmember Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Schu?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Resolution number nineteen thirty passes. I'd entertain a motion on resolution number nineteen thirty one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Moore, second Winters
Yes.
that we adopt resolution number nineteen thirty one, establishing a Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Councilmember Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Schu?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Resolution number nineteen thirty one passes. And that is it for new business for this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question concerning the last item. I know that we're going back. It's not in order, but I wanted to see if we could designate some ex officio members from the city, from the council for the committees that were just, that were just created. And so I know that we had talked about certain members having certain special interests in some of these committees, and I thought it'd be a good idea to at least, you know, informally designate members of the council for those positions.
Well, actually, why don't we have, we have conversations, and we can, we can formally move to adopt people in, in, as ex officios on the, on the committees, starting, we can do it next week, can't we, or that's?
You want it?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah. If somebody's got a preference, call them, let's talk about it.
I think you know where I'm sitting.
I know where you're sitting. Sorry, I know where I'm.
No, I, yeah. Parks and Rec.
Parks.
That's.
Welcome aboard.
That's it, exactly.
Welcome aboard.
Okay. But, yeah, we'll, we'll make that official next week.
Sure.
And then we'll start working on schedule and staffing for each of these, and hopefully we'll be able to kick it off sometime shortly after the budget session concludes.
Good.
So, council updates. Does staff have anything for city council? Gonzalo, you have anything for us this evening?
No, I've got nothing today.
Okay. Jeff?
Just a real quick thank you to all involved with the July 4th event. I saw some of you there. Hopefully, everyone had a great time. We had about 8,000 people at the event. All the parking spaces were taken. Great, great leadership and cooperation from our police department and the fire district to help us keep everyone safe and traffic moving, but from all the volunteers, the staff, and departments, well done and appreciate it.
How many, how many hours did your, did your department put into that? Going back to the whole special events coordinator, which I think there is a need, given the fact that we're putting so many more things on than we've got contracted in the park and all these other things now that we're doing, how many, how many hours did it take for your department to pull that together?
Well, I'm sure that's a ton. We don't necessarily log every administrative hour that we put in on it. Certainly, the associated departments, whether it be police or the fire district, would probably be able to give, give their totals at the event, but it takes months of prep time and lead time and coordination with the various groups involved, and, and we don't necessarily track every administrative hour, but it is quite a bit of the time for, for every event, really, but certainly these large ones.
Yeah, and then when you're talking about like coordination with things like special lunch trails and even, even the county fair and things like that, those events are an ongoing thing.
They are.
Definitely does.
We have roles with those as well, so you bet.
Yeah.
Larry, you have anything?
Nothing new at this time. Thank you, sir.
Now, I understand you went to a business retention and expansion conference shortly after joining us?
Yes.
Anything, anything of note come out of that conference?
I belong to a, an international organization called BREE, Business Retention and Expansion International. I've been on that board for a couple of years now.